I would like to call to order the city of Sagatuck City Council's special meeting for February 16th, 2023. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Baldwin?
Here.
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 Councilmember Louis is on the Zoom call and Councilmember Gardner has informed me he is on his way, but the weather is slowing his progress. So he is expected to arrive during the course of our meeting. With that, I would entertain a motion to exclude Councilmember Louis.
Second.
Baldwin, I'll give a second to Stanton. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed, say no. Very good.
Figure out who's.
Sylvia, Sylvia.
I was just figuring that out. Noise that we're hearing, that's pretty annoying. Driving Ryan Cummins insane is the exit sign.
Oh.
It's malfunctioning, so.
Wow.
Trying to fix that.
You're ready to rip it down.
So apologies to anyone that's hearing a strange cricket noise. It's actually our exit sign. So apologies for that. We're at item three, agenda changes. Do any members of council have any agenda changes, additions or deletions? Hearing none. We moved to item four. We have no guest speaker scheduled tonight. So that takes us to item five, public comment on agenda items only. I would invite members here in the city council chamber to approach the podium, state your name and residence, and please limit your comment to three minutes. Barry Johnson, you have your hand up. Feel free to approach.
We got the email.
Thanks, Barry.
Thank you.
Barry Johnson, resident voter at the city of Sagatuck. In front of you, I did a late email to you. I'm sorry for that. But I suggested some revisions in the ordinance and my revisions are in red. There's some strikeouts. I've numbered the lines so we can follow along on that. And so without further ado, we go to line 29 on the first page. And that's just a clarification. The original version said historical data, data on registered properties. I just threw in registered short-term properties to clarify that. Now you go to lines 51 and 52. There's strikeout, which is the introduction to the makeup of the short-term rental task force should include. Then I struck out the rest and then lines 55. It was down. Okay, so didn't change one. One member of the city council, two members of the planning commission, I'm suggesting revision. Number three, for impartial registered voters of the city of Sagatuck. And then I lined out all of those strange, trying to be inclusive, everybody in creating chaos with people that are predisposed to bias. And then line 66, redundant because of the strikeouts. Line 70, I'm suggesting seven members rather than nine. City council works very well with seven members, planning commission, seven members is a more workable number, I believe. I believe the number ballooned to nine to include this specific special interest membership. And then line 74. The selection policy be impartial rather than have parity. And again, I believe when I, when I go, those are mother revisions I suggest. And when I go to a meeting and there are people judging, I would really expect an impartial group of people reviewing that and not the list of special interest and predisposed prejudice to the processes. This was in the original makeup of the short-term rental task force. Those are my suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry. Any other members of the audience who would like to approach the podium and make comment? Please speak into the microphone, state your name and residence for the benefit of the folks on the Zoom call.
Good evening. I'm Bobby Gaunt and I reside in Sagatuck. And in the spirit of full disclosure, I am a member of the planning commission. I applaud the changes that have been incorporated into the resolution, including retaining a professional planning consultant, yay, recognizing and adding school and public safety officials to the list of stakeholders, and identifying a date, most importantly, when the task force recommendations are to be presented to the planning commission and city council. What I remain concerned about is the makeup of the task force and no explicit requirement for residency, only a preference. In addition to the one city council member and the two planning commissioners, at least by my count, there are six members from the community to be added to the task force. Following the criteria, five of those members will be associated with commercial interest, if I was counting right. The sixth member is identified as, and I quote, "a member from a residential zone who is not a short-term rental owner and who feels negatively impacted by short-term rentals in the neighborhood," end quote. I'm assuming this means a property owner who resides at their property, who feels negatively impacted by short-term rentals, but I don't know if I should assume that. And even though the language specifies they cannot be a short-term rental owner, which is great, they could own or invest in another type of business in Sagatuck, which means that all six community members could have commercial interest. At this point, in the interest of other city residents like me, self-interest, I'm interested in knowing where our voices are represented. I simply reside full-time at 341 Main Street, the property that I own. I have no commercial interest investments in Sagatuck, and I'm pretty much surrounded by short-term rentals. By the way, this does not apply that I'm opposed to them. I'm just surrounded by them. So for me and others like me, where is our voice represented on this task force? Thank you for your consideration and most importantly, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Bobby. Please.
Hi, I'm Kathy Brockington and I live at 989 Singapore Drive in Sagatuck and my family's been here forever. So I would just like, I don't have a long statement because I've already sent you notes and letters to the editor and all that kind of stuff. So you kind of know where I stand. But I too am troubled by the number of people on the committee who have commercial interests versus the residential makeup of the committee, which is a small minority. We really need to protect our neighborhoods. We need to protect our community feeling. People come here because this is a nice community, not because it's Disneyland or other live-in amusement parks. Unfortunately, I've heard a resident who lives across the street in the township, who has referred to for many years, we live in Disneyland. So we already have that reputation. But I think this is a really important issue and it's time for Sagatuck to get on board with this. I have read about many communities along the lake shore. I have read about communities in Hawaii. I've read about a community in Minnapp or Minnesota yesterday. They have three short-term rentals in their community. It's a small village and the residents are upset because of the behavior of the people in their three short-term rentals in this whole community. I thought, wow, now that's tiny and we're way beyond that. So, oh, I have lots of time. So I would like to impress upon the city council that this is really an important move that we are making to protect our community, our residential neighborhoods. I really don't want to have commercial enterprises in a residential neighborhood. The people that moved in across from me who have five bedrooms in their house and there's only two of them. When they first moved in, they were going to open a cocktail lounge, except that I came and visited the planning person and said, is this legal? Because they advertised about it in the newspaper. And they were going to, you know, sell drinks and have artists come to their house and enjoy the music, which is really nice, except we're in a residential neighborhood. So I don't have a cocktail lounge across the street from my house. And so I really want to impress upon you, yes, we need to keep our school. Yes, we need to preserve our businesses that are here full-time around the year for those of us who live here. And we need to preserve our neighborhoods and we need to start working on affordable, attainable housing so that we don't have to worry so much about short-term rentals and nobody living here. We really need our community to grow as a community. So this is only one area that we need to work on. Bye.
Thank you, Kathy. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, for the record, Mr. Gardner joined us. Oh, yeah. Clerk's going to that, yeah.
Okay, well. I've been here before. Jane Underwood, 130 Perriman Street. Okay, I've read it over. It's getting a lot better. But as Bobby Gaunt said, there's still some work to be done. I know we want to. That's not me. I turned it off. We want to get this done, but let's get it done correctly. We still have some issues that need to be taken care of. If it's taken care of tonight or next week or even the week after, but let's get it right. We have too many people who are not full-term residents actually living here and supporting our local organizations and hopefully more children in the schools. So I'll leave you with that. I have more time, too.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
Hi, I'm Holly Anderson on Wyrick Drive in the city. And like Bobby, in full disclosure, I'm on the planning commission. It seems like we keep sticking on the point around the who's going to make up this committee. And I think I can't speak for the planning commission as a whole, but my sense of our discussions around that was we were solving for fair representation. And I think in trying to do that, we've maybe created a box that's creating a lot of pinch points for people. So, you know, if I ruled the world, which would be scary, if we, it would, I think it would be wise to make that more general and just, you know, name the council and planning component and then the number of other people and say that, you know, those people should represent to the extent possible, you know, I mean, I'm not giving actual language, but the different constituents or stakeholder groups in the, in the community who will be affected by these policies. Thank you. And again, thank you so much for all you're doing.
Steve, please.
We are. Steve Manns, 568 Wyrick in Sagatuck, Michigan. And of course, in full disclosure, I am the chair of the planning commission and was involved with the drafting of this resolution. And I may have discussed this previously, but I just want to kind of reiterate this again tonight. The task force is made up of what we thought was various stakeholders throughout the city. The task force will not be making policy recommendations. They will not be implementing any, obviously, they don't have the power to implement any policies. When we were looking at the community, we said retail, lodging, restaurant owners, hearing their viewpoint in a task force type of a format was important. And they needed to reach out to their fellow retail community to get feedback to bring to the task force. We felt that we needed a short-term rental property manager because some of them do a very good job. Some have policies that they've implemented or other cities have implemented where they, maybe they're a little different than what we may have in our current ordinances as to what, how they notify the community or how they monitor those type of renters. So we wanted to have them on a task force so that they would have the ability, not that they're going to be biased for favorable or unfavorable. We can pretty much assume they might be favorable to status quo. But they needed to be on the task force so we could hear their opinion about that part of the management. The idea of realtor, we thought is important because many people say that if you make changes to your short-term rental policies, it can affect your real estate values. We hear that over and over again. So the idea of trying to have a realtor on the task force was viewed as what was important, whether they were favorable or unfavorable. You know, what we're hoping is that they would just be open-minded. And I think that's what we're looking for the interview committee to try to receive. And then the remaining ones, you know, we thought we should have a residential member from, you know, a residential zone, I mean, who is a homeowner that is positive, you know, potentially positive on the idea of the importance of short-term rental. And then one that would be somewhat, maybe as a negative, so you get to hear both sides because many of us know what some of the issues are regarding the complaints and concerns of short-term rental. The surveys will tell us that, our own surveys did it. And then we said that we would like to have a resident from the commercial. Now that is one thing that was kind of missing. It says one member from a commercial zone. It's supposed to be one resident from a commercial zone because in the commercial zones downtown, there are a number of residents that live in those commercial zones. And they would probably have a different view than someone who lives maybe in the peninsula zones. And so the idea was have three residents, one from a commercial zone, two from residential zone, and then the three other stakeholders of the retail. It was not designed in such a way for them to have a bias because when they come in, they're going to get the data. They're going to be collecting data. And the idea was for them to reach out to their community, those that they're similar with, and get the feedback that they could bring to the task force that they can put together with the consultant data to try to, to try to present to planning commission and council so that down the road, they can have the best informed decision. So I just wanted to bring that up and I know I'm running out of my time, but it was just something that I keep hearing people talk about the makeup. The makeup is really to be, is it representing all factions or the majority of the factions? And that's the reason for it. So I would urge you to kind of look at it that way and then move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Anyone else in the audience that would like to approach, make a comment? I don't see anyone in the audience. I do see one. Certainly, certainly, Barry. Yeah, thank you for that. I do see one hand raised on the Zoom, a Mr. Brian Elmore. Brian, if you unmute and would like to make a comment, please do so. Please state your name and address for the record and please limit your comment to three minutes.
Yes, thank you very much. Brian Elmore, 985 Bridgewater Lane in Sagatuck. First of all, I just want to thank the committee and the planning commission for all of the collaboration that's gone through in the many iterations of this. I've sat through the workshops. I've sat through the multiple committee meetings. And it's, it's great to hear the kind of the dialogue back and forth for people that are, you know, having divergent opinions, having edits to be made for the, the makeup, the ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. So it's encouraging as a part-time resident and also a short-term rental owner that, you know, that that representation is happening and that there is effort being made to have a representative stakeholder voice in this. And as was put, you know, we're not asking to have some kind of voting right that we don't have as a resident. We're just asking to have our voices heard. I do pose the question, though, and would love to hear, you know, at some point along the way, I've read many of the statements that have been put into the planning packets. I've heard the dialogue that's happened around the table around the number of short-term rentals versus the number of registered short-term rentals, et cetera. And it does beg the question to me that, you know, we're going through all of this effort and yet we don't actually have enforcement of the ordinance as it is today. And if we did have enforcement of the ordinance as it is today, would we have as much pain as some of the residents of Sagatuck do? You know, explain, I mean, as a short-term rental person, I've never had a single complaint against any of my, my guests. It's baffling to me some of the things that people have, you know, expressed in some of their statements. And I'm horrified by some of those experiences that people have had to have. You know, I'm a short-term rental manager. I have guests that are vetted by me. I have a professional property manager in town that takes care of the guests from arrival to departure. So I feel like a responsible short-term rental manager who's following the ordinances, who has their license, who gets their fire inspections, who pays their fees and all of that kind of stuff, and doesn't have complaints being lodged, the police being called and things like that, shouldn't be punished by, you know, people who just aren't even being enforced for the existing ordinances that are in place. So thank you very much.
Thank you for the comment. Jamie, do you see any other hands raised on the Zoom? Okay. Well, with that, I will close our first public comment period. And that takes us to the meat of the matter. Discussion item 6A, Resolution 230216-A Resolution, Short-Term Rental Task Force Recommended by Planning Commission. Ryan Cummins, would you like to just tee it up one more time before we get into deliberations?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. At your regular meeting on Monday, you continued to review the draft resolution that's in your packet that would create a short-term rental task force in accordance with section 4.28 of your city charter, which allows you to create advisory committees essentially on any matter for the city. The consensus of the council on Monday was to clarify and maybe add some language and take out some language in a few different parts. The council wished for there to be some clarity that a professional planner approved by the city council would assist and facilitate the task force's work. That language was added under the fourth, whereas there was a request to add schools, public safety and other community stakeholders to the fifth, whereas there was a request to add that residents will be given preference for selection to serve on the task force under the 12th, whereas there's a request to strike the language related to a budget and consultant planner from the third resolve section and a request to make it clear that the reports, written reports would be going to the city council as well as the planning commission. So that was added to the third resolve section. So those changes have been reflected in kind of an underlying fashion in the resolution that's in your packet from here. It's up to you to discuss and see how you'd like to proceed.
Thank you for that, Ryan. And before I open it up for deliberation among the council, city manager has informed me and legal counsel has confirmed that if we are to make changes to this, we will need to read the entire resolution with the changes. So I want the council to be aware of that because we want to be compliant in what we vote on today, tonight. So with that, I'm happy to open up the floor to the councils for further deliberations.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please, Helen.
I just wanted to note, everyone here is familiar with the changes that I proposed and I want to thank council for hearing my changes on Monday. We got some, to my mind, we got an improved document and improved resolution. I still believe that for all the things that we discussed on Monday that I don't need to reiterate tonight, the resolution is better, but is still inherently flawed. And I want to just respectfully be casting my no vote this evening, make you aware of that.
Thank you for that, Helen.
Thank you.
Any other council comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Where do I start on this? I'm in full support of the task force as a member of the planning commission and the representative to the planning commission from the council. Very much appreciate the council's confidence, having me fulfill that role. And having been intimately involved in the drafting of the resolution and presentation to council, I'm trying to avoid the effort to, you know, let perfect get in the way of good. It's very clear. I think we can all understand at this point that there's, there seems to be a consensus. This is the route we need to go. So the path to get there is, is being defined. And I think it's important for us to now kind of realize with all of the input, which I really appreciate. We've got a lot of smart people in this community giving us feedback. Is it's kind of evident why this has maybe not been tackled before because of the difficulty and the challenges involved in getting this to the table, right? So once I start listening to everybody that's here, you know, long-term residents like Kathy Brockington, you know, newer residents, former council members, Barry Johnson, just to name a few, their feedback is incredibly important to me. The resolution should not stand in the way of getting feedback from these folks as we move forward. So as our last meeting, my statement was that I have, I have infinite trust in the mayor, chair of the planning commission, city manager and others and then zoning administrator. In fulfilling the spirit and intent of where we're trying to go with this in the interview process, the selection of people to serve on the task force, I can understand why that's kind of a pressure point because it does involve a lot of definition and I'm more of the simplistic nature. I would like to make this as straightforward and simple as possible so folks can understand, but it does require some definition. You know, personally, I would like to see a couple more residents on the task force. I think it would go nine to 11 and have two additional residents on there because I hear from residents about this issue pretty much on a weekly basis. So I'm in support of the resolution. I appreciate the changes that have been made. I think that the inclusion of the consultant language in the, in the resolution is appropriate. I don't see how we could move forward on this without that assistance. We frankly don't have city resources to be able to support this appropriately, nor do we have the professional experience to deal with this appropriately. So I'm in full support of that and the costs associated with that. The other concern I have at this point is, given the time constraints that we have, I talked with the chair of the planning commission earlier today about this is I would almost suggest that we put another month at the tail end of this just to give us enough time to go through the interview process and not feel constrained by another month of, of, you know, boy, we're really kind of, kind of try to do this more quickly. I'm not going to stand in the way of, of the resolution if that changes it made, but I'm just trying to think of what we have in front of us with the current resolution. So.
Thank you. Lauren, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I don't think we're going to get to perfection on exactly what everyone wants in this resolution. But I think we all agree that we want to get this task force together, you know, other than Helen, but Helen also understands that she wants this to get going, right? There's urgency in this. Every day we turn around, we have more and more and more short-term rentals in, in our neighborhoods. Not that they're bad, but they're just a lot, right? More than a lot of communities. We have to admit that. We have way more short-term rentals than communities that are, you know, our size. You know, we're a vacation town. We're a beautiful vacation town. That's why we live here. But it has gotten to a point where maybe there's too many in our area and we need to figure out a good balance on what needs to happen. So we're all on the same page as far as going forward. The biggest thing that all of this has happened is that adding the professional planning professional, having that person be a part of that, that person is going to guide this task force through all of this. We're going to hear from every single person that wants to be heard. They'll have that opportunity. So even though the makeup might not be what everybody wants, we're going to hear from everyone in this task force is basically just giving recommendations. And ultimately, the planning commission, the city council will have the final say and the professional planning person will be helping us with that final say. That's all I have to say about that. And I just want everyone to be confident in our mayor and in the head of our planning commission to be able to pick those people to be a part of the task force that's just gathering information and just hearing from all of the stakeholders.
Thank you, Lauren. Any other council comments?
I want to thank Barry for your revisions, Barry. I'm just looking through them. I'm very happy with what you've done here and taking the time with that. And I'm kind of happy with that. I would be willing to read the whole thing if we'd like to consider any other changes.
Um, I would just say for the record, I've been the owner of a short-term rental. I've been a long-term renter. I've paid non-homestead taxes on a home and had no vote in the city. So I've had that experience. I live close to Bobby and Barry. I'm mostly surrounded by short-term rentals out of eight houses that surround me. Only two are owner-occupied. I do agree with Lauren. Fifty percent is a, is a high number. I agree with Brian Elmore that there needs to be enforcement. This is also an enforcement issue. I also heard what Bobby Gaunt and Holly said. And I, I don't, without reading this into the, into the record, I think it does need to be clear what Steve Mann pointed out, that one resident from a commercial zone, that that happens when this. That that happens when this, um, group is put together. I, I really do have empathy, uh, for multiple points of view. But I would also agree with Lauren that it's pretty much, I mean, I would prefer to workshop this one more time, but honestly, I, I am okay with putting this group together because it really is way past time. I mean, I, I think we sort of jumped the shark during the, during COVID. And, uh, the numbers are really high. And, and this is, to Lauren's point, this is about gathering information. And I also respect the, uh, work that the planning commission has done. I know that they had two meetings. There was a lot of work put into this. And, um, so I'm, I'm comfortable doing this tonight with that one caveat, that the member from a commercial zone eat a resident. So there are three residents as was intended.
Let me make, let me make sure I'm clear then, Holly. Are you recommending an amendment? That, that, then, uh, and, uh, which then makes us read this, which I'm comfortable doing.
Do that, but I would just put that as a, as a council person, I would just ask that the intent of that be considered when this group is formed. I don't need to read everything, read the whole thing into the record as the attorney has said, but.
So we're, we're, uh, just so we're all clear, you're not making a proposal to change any language. Okay, all right. Well, um, before I call the question, I, I would like to make a few comments. I would like to reiterate what Chairman Mann said. This task force is to formulate recommendations. It is not to make policy. It is not to make ordinance. It is not to make a regulation. It is to formulate recommendations. I think you all know that, you know, this is an important issue and there's a lot of diverse viewpoints on it. Frankly, I welcome a task force that brings a diversity of opinion to the table. My hope is that if we create a group with a diverse number of stakeholders that have different points of view, they can educate each other in a civil manner and reach some common understanding. Because I think at the end of the day, we want this community to remain sus- successful and sustainable. And I would ask everyone here to, um, trust the chair of the planning commission, Mr. Mans, and to continue to trust me. The voters have reelected me. You're all kind enough to put your trust in me as mayor. Like Bobby, like many of you, I am a single-family homeowner. I have two kids in the school. I am surrounded by short-term rentals. But I knew what I was getting into when I moved to Sagatuck five years ago. I frequently tell the story of my first day after moving in was the Saturday morning of Venetian weekend. And I was like, oh, my God. I didn't know my street was going to be a parking lot. So I think you all know me. I'm a single-family homeowner. I have no commercial interest in Sagatuck. I'm a civil servant. Having said that, I'm sympathetic to the view of short-term rental owners. We used to own a, own a vacation home in Holland. And, you know, when my family went overseas, I did not want to give up my connection to this great state or, or this country. I didn't want to be a, a person that didn't have a home in, in Michigan. And that made that possible by renting that home out. So I think we're ready to call the question on this. And I, and I hope, I know this has been painful. I know, as has been said, it's, it may not be perfect, but it's a start. And from my perspective, getting started on this is what's key, because we all got elected to make hard decisions and kicking the can down the road is not viable, given the rapid pace of change we've seen in Sagatuck. So with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution two, three, zero, two, one, six, dash, A, adopting the planning commission's recommendation to form a short-term rental task force.
Motion, motion Stanton, second Gardner. Clerk, please call the roll.
Baldwin?
No.
Buncey?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Stanton?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Who is this excuse?
Motion carries. Thank you, clerk. We are now in item seven, public comment. Wide open. We can comment on anything we like. I open up the floor, three minutes, please, to the audience. I think we've exhausted ourselves. All right. Anyone on the zoom that wishes to offer a comment? Seeing none?
Yeah, hi, hi. My name's Joe Clark. Uh, Scott, hi, I live right down the street from you. And, um, resident of Sagatuck for thirteen years. My family's been coming up here for multiple generations. We've had the same property up on the hill since my father was a young, young boy, about five years old. And, um, so consequently, I've seen a lot, you know, in this town. And, uh, made it my life goal to retire here. And, um, I have to say, I'm encouraged to, you know, hear the dialogue and more importantly, see the action that the council's taking to put together this committee. I think it's long overdue. I've stood in front of the, as well as my neighbors, we've stood in front of the planning commission several times years ago. Encouraging anybody who would listen that, you know, some guardrails need to be put around the whole situation. There are short-term rentals all around me. I don't, I'm not opposed to short-term rentals, don't get me wrong, but I do feel that, you know, with the, the level of change that's being driven and with the lack of, you know, enforcement of the rules that are on the books, that something needs to change. So I do welcome, you know, the city, council, everybody's, you know, consideration on this. I certainly would throw my hat in the ring if it comes to having a resident who's been around this town for a long time and has seen the impact of the short-term rentals. And who also can be objective. Neutral, I believe in property owner rights, but at the same time, I think residents should have rights too. So, you know, finding that balance is something that I would love to contribute to. And, um, and I thank you all for the time tonight.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else on the zoom that would like to offer a comment?
I don't know how to talk. Hi.
Could you identify yourself by name and residents for the record, please?
Sylvia Dapley. And I just learned about this meeting yesterday. I'm a thirty-year resident of Sagatuck. And, um, sometimes I've rented my home out, uh, as a short-term rental. And other times I've just lived in it, but, um, I recently moved to Florida when my mother got ill. And I bought her home from her estate, so I do depend on the income from that property to help me, um, make a new life here. But, um, I can understand that there are conflicting agendas. And I have no opposition to a task force. But, um, I think that, uh, is the money that's brought in to the city, uh, by people who attract, uh, vacationers to the city with beautiful, uh, short-term rentals. Is something to consider. And, uh, the other thing is, uh, I follow all the rules. And if there is some rule I'm not following, I would love to know about it personally. Because I do have a management company, but I stay very involved. And so I always get my permits and, uh, as far as I know, there's no rule I've broken. But I do believe in the importance of us to live together. And that, uh, people with, without short-term rentals, uh, you know, we've won privacy and issues with parking and all that stuff. So I just, I welcome the dialogue, but I'd just like to thank you all for, um, having this meeting.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to make comment on the zoom? Am I missing anybody, Jamie? Great. Uh, with that, I will close our final public comment period. We have no correspondence, which takes us to council comment. I'll reverse order. Russ, you want to kick it off?
Yeah, I, I, I just, as I'm looking at the names on the zoom call and the faces in the room, I'm just, I'm amazed by the cross-section of people that are engaged on this. I've never seen so many people on a council meeting, a special council meeting in this life and in my past life on council. Seeing names up there, I could say, when I saw Joe Clark, I immediately thought of Joe Clark, who used to live next door to me and his wife, Ellen, who used to be city clerk. So, and that's not the same Joe, but the point is, is that this has gotten the attention of people who have been here for a lot, generations, as well as people who have been here for literally five years. So, this is a great effort and I look forward to the efforts of the task force. And I also want to remind, and it was touched, touched on is that the task force members will have a responsibility to message this to the people in town. It's not just council, it's not just planning commission, but we all have a responsibility to talk to people about this, to make sure that they're heard, because not everybody is online, not everybody goes to meetings. This is a walk-around, talk with people. I will be talking to people on my block who are short-term rental owners who don't live here. Get on their agenda and talk with them. So I just want to emphasize that this is a community responsibility.
I don't know where to begin, um, but I want to keep it concise. I just appreciate with Ryan and Ryan Cummins, knowing that we've talked about the enforcement aspect of things and knowing that's something we can start working on right away. As, you know, city staff, you know, where we can go with some of the enforcement things, your reports have been fantastic. If you have a, a chance to look at Ryan Cummins' reports, he's like, we know which short-term rentals, you know, are on hold and why they're on hold and what's happening with those things. And they've been fantastic. So we kind of have a gauge of what's kind of going on in our community. I look forward to seeing, you know, what you do with, you know, forming the task force and getting everybody on board. I know you guys will pick a great group of people that, um, have it in the heart to do, you know, the right thing for our community. That's what it, what it comes down to and hearing, you know, from all stakeholders. And then I would hope that our community starts thinking outside the box on some things. Maybe it's incentives on how to get people to want to live here full-time. You know, those great homes that are right downtown that are walking distance to everything. That's why I live in town. I love it. I can walk everywhere and I want to live here full-time. Our schools are amazing. And, you know, that's another incentive for a lot of people to want to live here. So I just hope that everybody starts thinking outside of the box. Start, you know, we've all done the research, you know, we all, you know, we talk about the different communities, what they're doing. We've all been reading all of those. I know you guys have too. You've been reading up on what other communities are doing because we just want to find an answer and we just don't have it yet, right? So we just have to figure out what is going to work best for our community. So that's all I have to say.
I really don't want to follow that. Highly unfair. I, I agree. I look forward to the task force, uh, work. And, um, this is something that we have to do as a community to ensure the identity of this community. So, thank you.
I guess I, I want to, uh, repeat what everybody's saying and, and to remind everyone that this task force is not going to make any decisions. It will be reaching out to everybody. I've had the opportunity to talk to almost, well, golly, almost quite half of the people in this room and half of the people on Zoom about this issue. I appreciate Kathy Brockington coming into the flower shop and, and giving me, uh, her opinion and, and, uh, Laura Durham, uh, from Mill Pond Realty and gives me her opinions as well. Um, I'm really about finding a really happy medium, something that's going to help with our communities. And, and I appreciate a, a peaceful, uh, a joint effort with everybody without having to get angry, without having to get emotional, because we know that we've got varied opinions here. And we want to make it right for everybody so that we all get along. So, um, I'm looking forward, um, to going forward with this. And I, I did praise, um, uh, Barry because I did like your rewrites, but I wasn't suggesting, um, a rewrite. I just wanted to praise him and I thought those were great edits, Barry, um, uh, that you, that you sent to us. But like, uh, our mayor had said, um, and, uh, most of our, we have the consensus here to get that ball rolling. Uh, I think it's important to do that and having the trust in Steve Mans and our, um, and our, uh, planning commission. And, uh, I, I think we're going to find the right people and, and, uh, to, uh, to work in this task force. And, uh, I'm very optimistic about what we'll find out.
As the only person who took the no vote, I do want to assure all members of planning and all members of council that, uh, even though I disagree, uh, with a, a lot of what was in the resolution, I agree with, it's, it's not perfect, it's not even good, but it gets us somewhere. And, uh, what I can assure all of you though is that, um, while I'm not a fan of the resolution, I am a fan of democracy and I can count. And, um, I, and I am looking forward to moving, to moving in the progress and I will, I'm going to do everything and work just as hard. I took the no vote. I took the loss. Let's get to work. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Helen. I think I'll just wrap up by saying, um, you know, I, I, I have faith in this community. This issue is hard, but it was identified by the residents as a top priority in our strategic planning session. They voted for us to sit here to make hard decisions. I don't believe this needs to be a zero-sum game where somebody wins and somebody loses. I have faith, no matter what the constituency, that everyone can appeal to, we can all appeal to our better angels and come up to solutions that maintain the prosperity and the character, you know, and the spirit of this community. So with that, I would ask for all of you to look out for each other as you go home tonight, because it's nasty outside. And with that in mind, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion Stanton, second Baldwin. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.